Good evening. I'd like to call the -- to call to order the meeting of the county commissioners for December 20th. One announcement, that our meeting is being video and audio recorded. Is there any public comment to come before us tonight on any matter that's not on the agenda? Is there any new business? I don't believe there is. We need a motion to approve the minutes for November 29th. Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And now the approval of payroll and treasury warrants for December 2017. Is there a motion to approve them?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Are there any commissioners' reports or comments? Hearing done, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Don?
Thank you, Jim. Okay, I will call the December 20th Board of Selectmen meeting to order, our last meeting of the year. We have one addition to the agenda under new business. It's a, um...
I have it right here.
It's a bond note approval.
Okay.
So we'll take that up under new business and...
Excuse me. Sorry. Um, there's one item that needs to be tabled. It's number two under consent. We did not receive the closing documents on that.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll just wait on that.
Yeah, we'll just...
It's not a public hearing. Okay. Announcements?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. This meeting is also being video and audio recorded, and we are going to hear from our sewer director as to the current status of the Nantucket Harbor Schimmo Plus areas sewer project.
Good evening, everyone. We've had to make a couple of changes this week due to the asphalt plant shutting down on Friday. So we're going to be moving from all paved roadways, starting on Wednesday of next week, and we're going to be going into the gravel and dirt roads. One crew will be starting on the upper part of Marsh Hawks, working their way back down. And then the second crew will be over on Berkeley Avenue in Montemoy area. So, as of now, as of today, the Wama Squid area has been completely temporary paved. Rugged Road area has been paved. They finished McLean Lane and Tasman today. They paved around all the manholes that have been installed and all the drainage ditches over that way. Green Meadow has been completed. And tomorrow, they are finishing up one or two spots over on Meadow View. They're going to put in a couple, another 100 feet in a manhole, then pave it tomorrow. The Bylaw Road area, I know there's a trench of people, that was going to be patched tomorrow. North Liberty Street was patched today. Yes, the other end. The patch of, Missamas. CCTV, they've been, they started up on the Orange Street area first of the week, and then with some traffic issues, we moved down and we went over to the Hooper Farm area. We've completed all of Hooper Farm and all the side roads. We're starting on Fairgrounds tomorrow and Rugged and all this area stretch here to get that doing.
And is that cameras? Is that to look at what's going on?
That's, they actually go in, they clean the lines, and then they camera them afterwards, and we're going to have full reports on everything that we're doing. It's been, it's been an eye-opening event so far, so. But other than that, things are moving well. C Street's found full bypass, just about now completely gutted. The wet well work is continuing. They're doing a lot of demo work down there. The bypass system is running. I'm not going to say anything. Just let it, it's running. I won't say anything else. And the Surfside Project's moving ahead nicely, so. We poured some more concrete today.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, David. The Children's Beach Boat Ramp continues to be closed until January 15th for repairs. Town offices will be closed Monday, December 25th for Christmas, and Monday, January 1st for New Year's. There'll be no Board of Selectmen meeting Wednesday, December 27th, or Wednesday, January 3rd.
Okay. Now we move on to public comment. This is an opportunity to comment on anything that's not otherwise on our agenda. I believe that Tom Rafter is here to speak.
Good evening. Tom Rafter, Airport Manager. I just wanted to make the board aware of some things. There's been some discussion on social media and in the newspaper about the airport restaurant, and I wanted to give you a little bit of background on that and insight as to what's going on. The current lease expires at the end of this month. And as you know, according to procurement rules, we have to issue a public request for proposal. In addition, there's some needed repairs that we have to do to the restaurant, so it'll be closing down at the end of this month. And we're going to be replacing the floor and constructing a vestibule in the front entrance from the roadway, and also revamping the entire lease. The current lease has, it's not, it has some restrictions, and we're looking to try to make it a little more viable for an operator. And I know there's a lot of concern about the timing and things of that nature, but one of the things we took into consideration was that if we issue this request for proposal and we're anticipating new operators putting in proposals, it would kind of set them back if they had to start in January, February, or March. Because as many of us know, we make the money in a few months in the summertime, and then the rest of the year, you spend your time not, not spending as much as you made in that whole time period. So we didn't want to put somebody behind the curve coming into the process. So we're going to be issuing the RFP in January. We're hoping to have an operator in there by April. We're very pleased with the current operator, with the style, with the price and the product. We want to keep it that way, but there's a number of items that we're looking to do to provide additional opportunities for income for whoever the restaurant operator's going to be. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of those things, and we know it's going to, it's a short-term inconvenience, but hopefully for a long-term, successful venture.
Thank you very much.
Quick question. Was it anticipated that, did you guys make that decision to not bid it, like, earlier? Did you say, okay, we're not going to bid it, we're going to wait till now and do it?
It was...
Like, how was that decision made?
It was, it was during the process when we, we did identify we were a little late in getting started on the RFP process, because our lease management system had a, we had a problem, a number glitch there. But in the review process of the existing lease, the history of the procurement and everything else, that's when we looked at it and said, we needed to, you know, not put somebody in a negative and provide opportunity, equal opportunity for everyone.
Got you. Okay. So I would just ask if you've cleaned up all the glitches in your lease management system? That's very important.
I, it's, it's not just the system, it's personnel, too. It's, you know, it's a computer system, so you get what you put into it. We manage over 120 leases, and it was just an error in the year that it was put in. We had anticipated coming due next year, and it was actually this year.
Okay, well, it's important that we have confidence in your lease management system.
That's, we're working through that, yes.
Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
For bringing some clarity to it. I know there's worry in the community that there's not a lot of reasonable breakfast places, particularly for the winter, but it'll be, it'll be temporary.
Yes.
And hopefully, it will be even better when it reopens.
Hopefully. Thank you.
Thanks.
I just have a comment. It's more of a reminder to the board about making sure that we all speak clearly into our microphones. We do have at least one hearing impaired viewer at home who watches religiously, and she has reminded me again to remind you.
Thank you. Okay, and then new business?
Yep, I got it.
Yep.
You have an emotion?
No, go ahead.
I got it, hang on. Okay.
Maybe make a note that it wasn't reasonably anticipated.
Yeah. Okay, this is a bond approval that was, came in today, and we didn't reasonably anticipate it to put it on the agenda, so it's here tonight. And we are going to vote to, I'm making a motion that we vote to approve bond and notes for loan numbers CW 1526 and CW 1635 from the Mass Clean Water Trust, pending receipt of closing documents from bond counsel.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Approval of minutes warrants and pending contracts. We have payroll and treasury warrants.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Approval of pending contracts. Did anyone have questions, comments on the contracts?
I move their approval. Sorry. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Under consent items, number two has been removed, so we're just voting on number one. Are there any comments, questions, motion?
Motion to approve consent item, number one, as, as written. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Citizen departmental requests?
It's up to you. You, you are there. You can explain if that... So the next three items were added to our agenda this week. They are matters that have been pending before us, but we were waiting to clean up some specific language in the purchase and sale and the deed agreements. And I ask that you approve the transactions, noting that we won't actually execute the documents until some further documentation is received, which I think you all know what needs to be done, so.
Yeah, so for number one, it will be pending some finalized easement and MOU language with the land bank.
I move approval on number one under those terms.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And then for number two, this would be pending EEA approval prior to us being able to execute the agreement.
And again, a motion pending EEA approval, we support this?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Then I guess number three is the same.
And, so that's the same vote on number three, pending EEA approval?
Yes. So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Sewer Department request for town noise bylaw waiver.
Good evening again, everyone. This is to request a waiver of the bylaw so that we can perform night work to do the CCTV work on the, the whole entire Pleasant Street area between Backstreet and down into the roundabout, to include the side streets as we pass. With all the construction and everything else going on, we were going to try to do it during the day, but I don't think it would have been possible, because we would have had to do some lane closures or full closures. So I'm seeking to try to get a waiver for the week of January 2nd to the 5th, and the January 8th to the 11th, depending on if, if things go right, we'll maybe be able to get it done the first week. If not, we'll have to do it the second week, or at least a couple days. But we'll go in, start at 7:00 o'clock at night, maybe not work all the way to 5:00 AM in the morning, and the only noise that should be will be us lifting manholes, and then the jet truck working, and then the, the lights from the work zones, and then the small generator on the camera truck. It's more of just, so we just don't really watch up the traffic, so, and that's why we were seeking the waiver.
And I, is this, is this the same thing that I visited and checked out on Orange Street a year ago?
Yes. Yeah, the same kind of, same kind of system. It's a jet truck, and then it's the camera truck, and it's usually a crew of two. We will have some of our personnel on site with them at night for pedestrians walking around, and just for safety matters as well, so.
And you said week of the 3rd and possibly the week...
January 2nd to the 5th, which is right after New Year's, and then the, this January 8th to 11th. We may not need the whole time. We'll let admin know as soon as we know when we can get in and get out.
If I remember correctly, it really wasn't a noise this year, it was the lights, but I've...
It's not much of a noise. It is, some lights, you're going to have the yellow lights blinking and stuff like that, and you'll have some commotion and disruption, but...
That seems like the best time to do it, that time of year.
Yeah. And I would say, too, I mean, I'm sure everyone's been affected by the traffic rerouting and the various construction projects going on around town, and those are still ongoing, so anything that can be done at night is probably better recommended.
How long do you stay in any one area? Like, if you're doing one block, you there for an hour, or...
Could be, sometimes it's a half an hour, sometimes it might be a little bit more, with some of the stuff we've been finding, it maybe takes a little bit longer. A lot of this area should not involve a lot of heavy cleaning. The heavy cleaning would be the louder noise with the jet truck running a little bit longer. We go manhole to manhole as we do it. We'll be starting up in the Backstreet area and working our way down. So by the time later on in the night we get to, we can do around in the commercial areas more so than the residential areas, so.
I'm fine. I move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I will let Erica know as we get going, so you, everyone will know. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Okay, now moving on to public hearings. We have some National Grid petitions.
Hello, Jim Huxley with National Grid.
Hi.
Can you just formally open it?
Oh, I will open the public hearing for the utility petition on Main Street's concept.
Thank you.
Yes, we're looking to have the customer install two handholds on each side of the street, and to tunnel under the roadway one conduit, it's to serve a new hole at number 39 Main Street.
This is a public hearing. If there's anyone else from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing, no comments. I'll close the public hearing.
I just want to make sure that everybody saw in the departmental comment sheet about Main Street being a public highway, or a state highway, and it requires additional approval from the state.
I looked at the town map, I'm not at this one.
It goes all the way to the concept rotary.
I don't think, does the website show that?
Our information is from Mass...
The state.
Highway, that it falls within their layout, and that that information was relayed to National Grid.
So you're saying it's a state road, is that what you're...
It's within the state's layout, so you'll need their approval as well, is what we're saying.
Yeah, I think somebody should, your website says, doesn't show that, I don't believe.
Our website should not be the be-all to end-all of public road layouts. It's not, it's not an official deed.
How do we know it's a state road?
The entire milestone road is a state road.
No, but I go on the website, and it says, it shows you what's the state road and what's the public road. It shows, it's not a...
I'm not even familiar where it, it shows that.
Yeah. Well, thank you for mentioning it. We'll take a look at that.
Well, could we just make a motion that, assuming it needs state approval, then you have to get that?
Right.
If it needs state approval, then you have to get that first, but we'll, we'll approve it.
No, I'll, I'll vote it based on you getting state approval if necessary.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Next, we will open the public hearing for National Grid for number two, Howard Street.
Same situation, new home going in, second home. And they're going to install one handhole, and they're probably, they're going to install 37 feet of conduit, tunnel under the roadway.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? Hearing, no comments. I'll close the public hearing. There's a couple of comments from staff about marking things out.
Yeah, sewer will mark, have a crew mark out the sewer main in this area, it's old and clear and fairly shallow, and the second one is call ahead to mark out the water main. So the, the two note comments. So I move approval based on those two actions.
Second.
They have to contact who?
Water company.
The water company and the sewer department, so that they can mark it out properly.
They have some concerns in that area.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, number three for National Grid, 250 and 254 Maticat Road. I will open the public hearing.
Did you send that email on?
It's in the, yeah, I saw that. It's...
Do you want me to say something else?
No, there's an email with comments about...
Yeah, I just wanted to note that an email was sent around very late in the day on this matter, so I'm not sure if anyone was able to see it. But there was some concern, because the petition that we received from National Grid only, let me pull up the map, only was for 250 and 254 Maticat Road, but apparently, there's another part of the petition that deals with 252 Maticat Road, and there's another sheet plan, but we never received it, and so it wasn't advertised as such, so I'm not really sure how we proceed. Whether it be continued, or you just approve what, what the petition was, I'm not sure.
Can we add, are we, are we allowed to add 252 to be added to the petition?
What do we ask town councils?
That's the request of Mr. Robert McLeish, his request is he would like to request for the record that 252 Maticat Road be added, and then the fourth underground line be identified by the Electric Utility and added as well. He said that what they identified, he's claiming what they identified, there's more going on.
But it wasn't advertised that way.
It wasn't.
It wasn't, there was, in, in the petition itself, and on the plan that was submitted, there was no mention of 252 Maticat Road.
And the department heads didn't get a, look at that and comment on it?
Do we need to wait?
So should we, should we hold this and re-advertise for the 10th?
Unless you want to...
Well, it doesn't matter to me.
I mean, you could approve this petition as it is, and if 252 also needs it, that would just have to be re-advertised as its own petition, I guess.
It's all, it's all one petition.
But my point is, the petition never mentions 252 Maticat Road in any of the language that was received, and this...
Does it mention 250?
250 and 254 only.
Petition itself?
Yes. Which was what we received from Chris Raymond at National Grid, so 252 and the second sheet that shows that, that you sent us today, we didn't receive that second sheet.
Yeah, no, I'm just, normally, they don't put addresses up there. They just mention 355 feet of conduit. I talked to somebody, I sent an email on November 20th, and they told me they had everything they needed. The town told me that.
Well, we only get what you provide, so if we don't have the correct address, then...
It was, I, we requested 300, 355 feet of conduit. On sheet one, there's like 180, and on sheet two...
But the point is, there is no sheet 80, and on the petition, it only talks about 180 feet of one four-inch PVC conduit. So there is no, that number, that 380, there's no reference to that in here, and there's no other, there's nothing to even add to it to get up to the 380. There was no sheet two. So it was very specific to these two properties, is my point, not including the 252.
We can approve what we have, and we ought to come back. So I make a motion to approve what we have as outlined in the petition.
No, we have to, we have to...
Oh, close the public, I'm sorry.
Close the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing, and...
So I make my motion, it was earlier that we approved the petition as outlined?
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I have a question before I vote in favor. If, if there's another set of these, if we vote this tonight, and then vote the other one in a month or two weeks, or whenever we do, will all the work happen at the same time anyway?
Yeah, I would just say, just, I would wait until all things, because it's like a half hour.
That's what I, that's what I was kind of, that's what I was getting to. Okay.
Well, so we'll just re-advertise this for 252, and we'll get it on the next meeting we can.
We'd have to receive a petition for that.
So we'll need some paperwork from you to add that additional...
That you have, mentions these two addresses?
Only those two, not 252.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I just dropped, I didn't, I don't even mention the address.
They're mentioned in the petition.
Yeah.
And that's the language we use for the advertisement, unfortunately.
And it says specifically, this is required to alleviate illegal customer services to those houses.
At 250 and 254.
So if you're adding a third house, you probably really need to notice it that way.
Yeah.
And I think there's some merit with going forward with the motion, because otherwise, do we continue this hearing?
No, because it, it would have to be re-advertised anyway, so you might as well go forward with this one, and...
That's what I'm saying, I think my motion makes some sense.
Yeah, no, it totally does. But National Grid is going to have to submit a new petition.
I understand, I was just responding to Matt's comment about me, we wait and do the whole thing together. I think there's some benefit in...
Yeah, we'll just have them write up a whole different petition, get the right numbers in.
So do you guys want to withdraw the motion, and...
Well, we can approve it for these two properties.
No, we haven't voted on it, huh?
But they're not going to probably do the work.
Okay.
So, well, we started to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Three to one. Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have a public hearing to consider a change from a wine and malt beverage annual license to an all-alcoholic license for Keepers Restaurant at 5 Amelia Drive. Open the public hearing.
Yes, hello. This is a change of category. As you mentioned, they currently have a beer and wine. They've been in business this certain restaurant for the past year as a beer and wine, and they'd like to expand it to serve all alcohol. As I mentioned, prior to this, when it was Cinco, they also had an all-alcohol beverages license, so that did exist at this location several years ago as well. And like I mentioned, they've, you know, been great this first year. We've had no problems or issues. And as I stated in their letter, and I state too as well, that they will continue to focus on dinner service, not turning this into any other sort of operation, but to continue just to have more of an offering. So we have no objections to, to that.
Okay. It's a public hearing. If there's anyone else who would like to speak, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing. With pleasure.
Make a motion, we approve it?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Oh. Next, we have the Shellfish Aquaculture licenses.
Jeff is upstairs in Concom. So could we, could we go to the next one and then come back to that?
Sure.
Okay.
So next, we have a public hearing to consider renewal of all annual liquor, common vic, entertainment, motor vehicle rental agencies, local flour, produce vendors, junk dealers, automated amusement devices, mobile food units, motor vehicle class one, two, and three, open-air parking.
Yes. So I wanted to start off, as I said in my memo, to just kind of explain, I've noticed with some comments over the past two weeks, maybe some misunderstanding as to what this is and what this process is. In this instance, we're going through renewals for, as you mentioned, all, most of these local licenses that are on a calendar year basis, and annual liquor licenses. So that's about half of our liquor licenses, about 42. There's 54 others that are seasonal, we'll deal with those in March, so that's why it's a shorter liquor license list. This is really to agree to renew those existing licenses. This is not going to issue any of these licenses. And I'll go through each category as we go through them, but each of these categories, once we vote for this renewal, you're certifying, at least to the state for liquor, that we have all of their renewal forms and their insurance certificates, which we do.[1699.13] certificates, which we do. And I have to go online and certify that you voted to that. And then the others are local licenses. Once we do this, then we can go through the process of issuing it for those that follow the regulations, that have COI's inspections, that have health inspections. Whatever it is required for their particular licenses will happen now. Payments, that sort of thing. So if there's any confusion that this vote will issue a license, that's not the case. Also, as well, we discussed with legal counsel, different questions that have come up as far as changing any existing licenses. If any regulations have come up in the past year that might change what certain conditions are and what your ability to change those is. And as I mentioned, that especially for alcohol licenses by statute are entitled to be automatically renewed for as they are right now. If you were looking to not renew a license, to object to that or change any conditions, we would have to, as we usually do, schedule a hearing, give notice, and have that discussion. So if anything's identified here this evening, or if there's any comment that leads to that and we feel the need to discuss it further, we will have to set a hearing to do so. And I know there's several instances that might happen. But that's really where we are with that. Entertainment licensing as well, there are certain state regulations to that, that if you look to change conditions, which I know there's certain conditions in some licenses we might want to discuss, it's how you would have to do that. And it would have to be improved unless it would adversely affect the public health, safety, or order. And again, we can set a hearing for discussing those issues as well as we move forward. So I have provided lists for, and I have to make three corrections, Erica, make two additions and one removal on the list. And I'll go through that as we go through. So in each category, we listed, in this one, liquor licenses, white hair and got cut off in the printing, so they are still there. Correct. I just wanted to officially say that. There was nothing there. We had one thing I'll say with liquor licenses this year. We had no restaurants in this category fail compliance checks this year. You know, in the past, we've had maybe six to 10, you know, we've had the hearings and stuff like that. Didn't happen this year. You know, I think...
We showed a light on it.
Yes. You know, and we had the meeting in June, and we all, they know me a little too well at this point, but we all talk about it. We kind of explained how it happens. And the communication is very frequent now. And I think that helped. Everyone really kind of stepped up and, you know, we're pleased with that part of it. So we have nothing to report in that sense this year. In this case, again, voting on renewing these licenses is for me to go in online with the state and certify that we are intending to renew it. Two things, as we mentioned before with crosswinds, I have them on this list, and we've done this before, in that we're going to renew the license so if the current LLC and operators of that business are selected similar to what we do with Jetty's, then we can issue it once they follow those regulations. We've done that before. We can put a hold on it. The state is fine with that. If it's not someone else, they will have to surrender and we will go for a new license. And also, the one license on there that was left off, that's not going to renew and that's surrendering, is fortunately Starlight. Their lease is not being renewed. So they will be surrendering that license as of January the 1st.
But they don't have to do a formal surrender, right?
I'm having them do a formal surrender, just to protect them. And once that happens, so that'll happen, the license expires December, January 1st midnight. So I think those are the only two. We've added the new ones, changes. And then if there's any comments on liquor licenses, we can address that. Otherwise, we don't have any objections to renewals.
I've just, I made a disclosure quite a while ago about the fact that my family owns the laundry and dry cleaners, and a number of these businesses use the services at certain times, but that it's not detrimental to my decision-making.
And up to the same with selling bread. We don't sell a lot to any of these.
So I don't know if we, do we want to take comments on each category? Or, I don't know, I can do it all at once? Or I prefer the liquor vote be separate because I have to certify to the state that you agree to that.
Well, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on anything pertaining to the liquor licenses? Okay. And then I'll see, is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on any of the other licenses? Then we'll close the public hearings, and we'll vote separately on the liquor and then the others.
So before, I just want to thank you for the narrative.
Oh, sure.
That was really good to be reminded of that, maybe every year.
Yeah, I know, I've got a lot of questions the past week. And I'm like, oh. So, thank you.
I agree, it was very helpful.
I make a motion to approve liquor license, renew the liquor, approve of the renewal of the liquor license as presented.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And then before we get on to the others, I'll just have a quick comment. I may have been some of the questions, because I had a request from the sign committee.
Yes.
And that what they would like to do is shine a light on, they had 26 violations, of which 11 complied. They weren't all restaurants.
Correct.
It's a whole mix of people, you know, with various things. Most of them have been noted. And so they were saying, is there any way in this process to make sure? Because sometimes the owner of a property will get it, they won't give that complaint
Correct.
to the person operating it. So is there any way for us to, at the end of the year, make sure we let the owners know that this is an issue?
Yes. I think, I don't know if you got my response to that. Okay.
I did.
So I'll repeat that.
I'm putting that on the cameras.
Yes, yes, that's fine. So we were discussing this today, and signs have been an issue and other kind of display items have been an issue coming up. So I've discussed with them several things. One, they send courtesy notices to the building owner. That doesn't, the building owner, who knows who that can be? And pretty much every time I go see them, they're like, I never got it. You know, we have someone else signing off. So, you know, we have this enter-gov system now where we're putting in who the managers are, who the business operators are. It needs to be starting to notice those folks as well. We need to, the people who are day-to-day operations. So that was something we identified. And that we need to be emailing, doing different ways, because that's how people respond now. So we noticed that was certainly in the past an issue. It wasn't people were ignoring us, it just wasn't going to the correct place. It needs to be a little bit more integrated into this licensing process. You know, I mentioned that they need certificate of appropriateness, COA. If it's something that we need to start having along with these licenses, like the COI, like the health permit, I think they have two or something that comes with the license that they go through, anything additional they need to apply for. They need to have a one-sheet that goes with these licenses. A lot of new people coming in, they're not going to read the sign book. Sign book's great if you want to go into it, but we give them about 10 different manuals that are 20, 30 pages. People aren't reading it. We need to kind of start highlighting some of these things. So most people have no idea. Like, what's the problem? Is it the color? Is it the font? Is it the words? So there's just, we can do a better job of communicating.
It's all...
You know, and I went down and talked to that one incident today, and they took it right down and are going to call and have that conversation. But I, like I said to them, is I need more help being able to communicate it, because I'm telling these licensees about 100 different things they have to start doing. And, you know, whatever we can do to simplify that. But I think, you know, it's a larger conversation too, as far as displays and merchandise. And it's some things we're tackling this winter so that we can communicate better once April comes. We have a lot of new businesses and people that turn over that don't know the Nantucket way. And we need to kind of address that on a larger issue.
But it's pretty important, because if you remember a couple of years ago, it started on Old South Road, and we had those balloon things flopping in the air. And one person does it, and everyone else thinks it's legal, and they do it.
Well, that's, that's it.
And so then the police had to take time out of their busy day in the middle of the summer.
Yes.
And so what the HEC is saying, if there's, you know, and really, there's only, what, 11 people, people comply, there's like probably eight or 10 people in this whole pile that need to be told, hey, geez, do it different.
Right.
Most of them, all of them will. There are just one or two that might not. Most of them are going to do it. And then you're down, that would just keep the, and I think that's a good suggestion.
It's getting to that point. And like I said, we need to communicate better and have some sort of better guide for folks that are coming into these businesses. But all day long, it's, well, he's doing it. You know, so I'm like, don't worry, I'm going there too. He's doing it, we've always done it this way. And what's the problem with this one thing?
You can predict the excuses.
So, yeah, it's, but it's being consistent, you know?
Right.
Like raising a kid, you have to be consistent with what you're doing. But we're telling them a lot of things, and I understand that. It's been a lot. So if we can simplify the communications on our end, and then these are things we know to look at, because like I said too, we're the last step in this process in licensing. You need to do everything else before I can issue a license, right? So if this is part of it, then this is part of it. Then it's something we know to look to. We attach to the record. So when this stuff happens, I can look to the record and go, oh, okay, they only have two COAs, they need one for this. That will be helpful. So I think having a centralized system that we're put together will help.
And I think having you discussing it with the sign committee or John, and being in touch...
Correct.
...early enough to set the right, that's important.
And with these licensees, I went there today, the one we were discussing, and just had a talk with them and explained it. And it was helpful. It was a little bit more helpful than getting a courtesy notice, because it didn't make any sense to them.
So de facto, then, do you have to be the enforcer of the signs?
The bad guy?
Of the signs?
Well, yes, in a sense, especially if I'm issuing a license to such, because they know, that's the leverage, is that, okay, if I'm issuing this license and you're not doing A, B, and C, that needs to be done for this license. I think what I've worked with the sign committee on, hopefully, is explaining how maybe they can do a better job to get that message out so that it doesn't get to me. Once it gets to me, it's kind of messed, and it's, you know, there should be a way that they understand the seriousness of it. Courtesy notice sounds nice. Might be a little bit, they need to understand what the actual violations are, what the fees are if they do violate it, and what that is. It's just being kind of like this right now, because they'll go down Old South and see someone else doing it. So again, it's a bigger issue that I think we'll tackle this winter too, and then maybe support from the board too, as well as we really need to hold to these regulations will help as well. Because it has gotten a little loosey.
So do you have like a checklist of everything that people need?
As far as signs?
Well, everything, I mean...
We're getting there. And that was one other thing we talked in this conversation, and I've talked to fire department and others and saying, I need a one-sheet from everybody, just on the basics.
Right.
You know, we went on, did some fire inspections before stroll and realized, I didn't realize you couldn't have live trees in certain places are live. I learned some things too, and some new restaurateurs weren't really aware of it. You think it's logical, but I don't think about that. They had a wreath that was live. You know, little things of that sort, if you can have a one-sheet, and I think so, we're all working together on that. So once we issue a license, they at least have a one-sheet, because that's everyone's reading limit these days. It'll help. So we're getting there. So yes. Yes.
Thanks, Matt, for bringing that up.
So if we get to entertainment, which obviously is another big one, and as you discussed, if we, as we move forward, and that's another thing we're working on too as well, is developing what this policy is on a town-wide basis so that we can apply these conditions to these licenses. We don't have that right now. We need to have a policy such as we have a liquor policy to apply these conditions to a license. So right now, we're just on a basic level. I need to add the grade in-house to entertainment list. So entertainment licenses, these include all of them, including the seasonal liquor licenses, because they are on a calendar year basis. So a lot of these seasonal ones won't be issued until spring anyway, but we go ahead and do all of them in one. So, is any questions on entertainments on that? And we have...
Amy had a question on...
Yeah.
Because we talked about policy that, I think the first or second meeting, when I became on the board.
Correct.
It's probably too late now to do anything with policy, so we would develop it.
Yes.
What's the timeframe? How would we start that?
Well, that's something I think we're ready to do, and that I've been discussing with other departments as well. Couple other things that are in process right now need to happen for me to completely finalize it. But I think what we're looking to do is make it such that right now, entertainment licenses are, you can have five instruments, you can have a singer, you can do this, that it should be similar to how a building is categorized. If you have an A1 or A2, you have five levels of entertainment license, background music, background plus acoustic, background plus acoustic plus plugged in, plus and up to the nightclub level, with which we have three. That way, we have them in five categories, and then we add conditions per the location. And I think that's the direction we're going into. That also includes all the other things with liquor, with alarm systems, with sprinkler systems, with the fire codes, so that when we have these conditions that we want to do, that we have, and we also have a policy in place with how we change conditions to a license. Because right now, we don't. So I'd like to have that, so it's easier for us to tackle this in the future, and it's more consistent.
Yeah.
So I think that's...
Gives easier expectations to the...
Yes. And that we would involve other folks in the community in discussing this and coming to regulations such as we did with, I think you did with alcohol years ago. That's my desire to do this winter.
It's a lot of hard work in the beginning, but hopefully easier for everybody.
I think we know where we need to go.
Yeah.
And it's just putting all those things in place to get there. So, but we've kind of been doing it already. And especially as new things come online, we do it as we want it to be. So, there you go.
Yep.
Question?
And it's kind of hard when, on the entertainment side, it's kind of hard, someone that's backing up against a residential neighborhood...
Right.
May have to have different constraints than someone that's right in the middle of town. And they all, you know, when a new person goes into that spot, they go, hey, I'm in the commercial downtown, everything goes, we can let it rip. And sometimes you really can't, because, you know, it sort of have to be fair to the neighborhood.
Right.
And I think that's the, you know, that's the tricky part. So...
And how do we define certain things? So I think that'll be the discussion, so we can enforce it to some extent.
Yeah, and they've been like, some of these places have been, you know, sort of good neighbors for years.
Yes.
And then all of a sudden, they aren't.
Correct.
Sometimes.
I mean, for the most part, people will comply. You have the handful that will push and push and push. And, you know, so we're working with that.
Correct.
Yes. We also have common vicular, the food licenses. I will say, I pulled off one being the lobby bar, 02554 Market at 41 Main Street. And when that comes up for seasonal renewal, I think I will be holding a hearing on that. Worked with the health department that we're letting that expire because of certain conditions not met. So that's the only one, I think, that I removed that's a current licensee in that situation. So we'll bring that up for a hearing if need be.
Okay.
Maybe we should vote on common vics, and I'll abstain, since I hold one.
Didn't we already vote?
No, we just voted on the liquor.
Liquor.
I hold one. Oh, you hold one? Okay.
We can do all and just abstain your vote.
We were doing, going to do a blanket vote on the rest.
Okay, and I'll just abstain on my own.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So we have entertainment, common vicular, what's, you wrote through? You don't have the rest of them? Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, I'll just go through, just, there's one I wanted to bring up too. So we have, I just want to give motor vehicle sales, which are the new vehicles, used vehicles, used vehicle parts. I don't believe we have any changes to those. Motor vehicle rental agency renewals. I want to remove Island Buggies, and I'll be pulling a hearing for that too as well. And this is something, I'm just going to state my intention to bring this matter before the board at some point, for removal of those, that license and discussion of that policy. So that will be discussed at a later time. I am going to, from what I understand from legal, too, I need to set a hearing for that and make that decision at a different time. The thing with this is, it's renewal of a license to be a motor vehicle rental agency. to be a motor vehicle rental agency. The medallions and the issuing of the medallions is again, a separate situation that they have to meet certain requirements and make certain payments to receive. So. And I'd like to review that along with, with that. But I've received information in the meantime, that's going to make me set a hearing for that. So that's why I want to remove that.
Should we make, I'll make a motion to remove island buggies from this list before we vote.
Yes. Great. And.
And the lobby for their common deck?
Viculars.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have others.
Oh, okay.
Then when we get there.
Okay. I didn't know if we were doing.
Getting two of them done.
Okay. We also have mobile food vendor license renewals. I don't think there's any changes. There is one that wasn't operational this year, but that's because the vehicle was stolen. And so I've agreed to just renew it. That's 167 raw. That's why that is there. Then we have flour, produce and shellfish vendor renewals. I believe there's no changes there. And again, no shellfish street vendor licenses were issued. And I believe that is the list. Oh, open air parking licenses too of those, one being the Valley Park of America and the other Nantucket Windmill Auto. And then that's it.
I have one question before we vote this, the whole thing in to the town council. Since I have a common victualers for handlebar that's in here, do I need to abstain? If we both do that, then can two. I'm sorry?
You just want to vote on yours.
Then we wouldn't have a quorum to, yeah.
Just yours.
Now Matt also has one.
They can't just abstain, they can't vote on the others and just abstain on their own license?
That's what I was going to say. If you vote those two separately.
Right.
Okay. Then you have your three votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For each.
That'll work.
Does it work? Oh, right.
Yeah. Yes. So we'll remove Something Natural and the Handlebar and vote on those separately from all the other licenses. So we'll vote, let's vote on all the other licenses.
Minus Handlebar and Something Natural. That's my motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we'll vote on Something Natural.
Make a motion to approve the licenses recommended for both Something Natural and.
No, separately.
No, just wanted to, Something Natural.
Abstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now you'll abstain and we'll take the vote on Handlebar.
Oh, make a motion. We approve the license for Handlebar Cafe. Obstain? We need a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I was just thinking of dying it just.
Okay, thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy. Thanks for being here.
We will go back to the shellfish aquaculture. Mr. Carlson. We'll open the public hearing.
All right. Good evening. Jeff Carlson, Natural Resources Coordinator. What we have in front of us is tonight is our departmental request for the renewal of some private aquaculture licenses. I'll spare the reading for the individuals and the lease numbers in the table. We're looking at two separate areas, the one in the head of the harbor, our main aquaculture site. If you scroll down one more, Erica, you can see the names on there. That we're looking at the three in yellow for Gordon Fraser, Matt Herr and Chuck Connors. And that's part of their four acres in production. And then the next map down are our six two acre overwintering sites that were approved originally three years ago for a three-year term. And we're looking to extend those for the guys to use for their overwintering and gear storage and seed storage. And it's a nice area that they can get to, to hold the things that if there's a harmful alcohol bloom in the head of the harbor or something, they can kind of get away from to protect their, their oysters or their, whatever shellfish they're raising. And then back on the chart, you'll see, we've had a couple of questions about this. The new expiration dates are a little, there's a couple that are all over the place, but most of these guys hold two or three leases to get to their 10 acres that they're eligible to hold. And what we're trying to do is instead of having multiple expiration dates, get all of their leases synced up onto the same expiration date. So they don't have to try to track all those multiple ones. So a lot of them are for the May 1st of 2025, which is inside their 10-year window that they're eligible for. Then there's the, the one for 2019, one for 2023 and one for 2024. All these folks are actively working their leases. They're in compliance. And they're doing really well. They're a good group. And just to throw in there too, it's another question that came up. In the last two years, we haven't received any complaints about the aquaculture leases or the aquaculture program. We get some questions for what all the buoys may be or what's going on with those guys, but no one seems to be in complaint. And the oysters are pretty good if you get a chance to eat them. So.
This is a public hearing. So anyone from the public who wishes to speak. Hearing no comments. We'll close the public hearing. What's the pleasure?
Move approval?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Number seven, public hearing to consider amending Chapter 200 Traffic Rules and Regulations. I'll open the public hearing.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. There are several issues before you tonight to be decided. And one's a follow-up on the previous meeting we had regarding residential parking district expansion. But the first one that we'd like to discuss is a proposal regarding the commercially registered vehicle permit. We have a couple of suggested changes we'd like to see in that. One is we'd like to see the language revert back to what was originally proposed and adopted by the board. And it seemed to work the best of all the, the various iterations that we've had. And basically what this language does is it makes it incumbent upon the applicant to prove to the police department or the licensing authority that they have a need to get this permit. And very few people actually have, have that need when it comes to that kind of a burden. And the other thing is we're proposing a change in the permit fee. Currently, it's $25 for a permit. And we're basing it on a gross vehicle weight, which is a weight that's published or printed on each of their registrations. So if it's a 5,300 pounds or less, which is basically an F-150 pickup truck, it's $25. We're not proposing any change there. But if it's above 5,300 pounds, which are your bigger box trucks, your big panel trucks, things like that, generally, we're proposing a $100 fee for that vehicle. That's the first proposal. The second part of it is we're recommending a change in the fee of the commercial vehicle town lot permit. And this is a permit that non-residents can purchase, which would give them permission to park in the parking lot down behind the finance department. And currently, it's a $400 fee. And previously, it allowed parking from Columbus Day to Memorial Day essentially. We're making two suggested changes. One is we're suggesting an increase of the fee to $1,000. And which we believe is more in line with, you know, what other off-island locations are charging. Also, we're changing, suggested the dates that it, they'd be allowed to park there would be the Monday after stroll to the Friday before Daffodil weekend. And that would allow these vehicles. There's not that many of these permits that are actually sold. There's probably 15 or 20 in total. And the expansion of the residential parking district, if you recall, there was a public hearing, there were several comments by residents, others, interested parties. It initially was a petition by residents on Sunset Hill to add Sunset Hill to the residential parking district, which a determination was made that it was qualified because of its abutting up to the extension on Westchester there of the residential parking district. And the subsequent discussion identified some concerns for some residents who may, because of the topography there, they may be required, they may currently park on Sunset Hill, even though their house fronts on Westchester Street. And it would make parking difficult. In particular, there was one resident that was singled out as being a potentially handicapped individual. The, you asked me to come back with a recommendation. We looked at, reviewed the hearing, that what the concerns were, people were voicing. And essentially, our suggestion is to make Sunset Hill and Westchester up to North Liberty Street part of the, the residential parking district and the commercial parking district. This would take care of the concerns of all the residents on Sunset Hill. And it would also not add that much of a burden to those residents on Westchester as most of them have off-street parking as it is. But what it will prevent are people parking there overnight and just moving from Sunset, Sunset Hill to Westchester. The next change that we're asking is just an administrative change. Essentially, in the current regulations, there's reference to, under the speed limits section, there's references to Section 18 and Section 17. Doesn't say Section 18 or Section 17 of what. So we're just putting in the proper reference. And then we're adding Section C, which is just memorializing your earlier decision several months ago to adopt the 25 mile an hour speed limit islandwide. And town meeting vote also on that. So. And that's it. Those are suggested changes and recommendations at this point for the parking, or the parking regulations.
Can I just ask one question? I'm going to take public comments. The, the 5,300 weight? I'm just trying to reconcile that because there's a business tax deduction that if you have a vehicle 6,000 pounds, like the vehicle I drive complies with that. So it just makes me think that is really, does that cover an F-150? I would think that it would be the 6,000 pounds, not 5,300.
We looked, we looked through and we looked through the applications that we have too in addition to it and looked at what a lot of them were on there. And that seemed to be where the split was in those types of vehicles.
Okay. I just wanted to, wanted to make sure because I know that a lot of people try to follow that 6,000 pound vehicle if you use it for business use.
Well, that might be for a whole different, a whole different issue.
Driving a tank, Tom.
Curtis Barnes, 12 Sunset Hill Lane. I want to thank you all for the opportunity to pursue the question of residential parking. We did have the public hearing in September. And I was not aware until this meeting notice came out that the recommendation had been to extend it to Westchester Street. When we applied for residential parking, we were required to get 51% of the residents to sign an application for that. I don't believe the Westchester Street people were asked to do that. And at that public hearing, a number of them commented that since they had driveways, they weren't too concerned about the parking on the street. There is the, as the chief has mentioned, the situation with an elderly person who is potentially handicapped, who has a street address of Westchester, but actually has the front door or the door of her house on Sunset Hill Lane. And I have raised the question whether she would be eligible for a handicap permit, which would then exempt her from the timed parking. Our concern is that by expanding it to Westchester Street, it has allowed one or two residents there to actually move their cars up to Sunset Hill Lane. And without making it a neighborhood vendetta, I happen to be the victim because the person who moves his car at 7:30 every morning parks in front of my driveway. And then he takes it back at 8 o'clock at night and parks it in his driveway on Sunset Hill Lane. And I have some pictures to back that up. So my request would be to remove Westchester Street from the new parking area and just limit it to Sunset Hill Lane as originally proposed.
I just wanted to note that I actually had a visit from that particular resident who is elderly this week. We had a very long discussion about what the town administration is proposing. She is the one that has a Westchester Street address. Her driveway is on Westchester Street. But because of her age, it's easier for her to get to her property. And it's also been always like this, that she's always accessed it from Sunset Hill. And she loves the idea that Westchester is going to be included. She's happy to buy a residential parking sticker and is in favor of our recommendations. So I just wanted to note that.
Thank you.
John Rikio, 33, Westchester Street. A neighbor of Curtis in some way. We back up to Sunset Hill. We think the logic of having Westchester in this scope makes a lot of sense because if it were restricted solely to Sunset Hill, the people who ordinarily park up on Sunset Hill would all populate Westchester. And that's what we're trying to do against. And I think that's what's coming out within the section that's been talked about before here. So I think if you continue to do that, the one question I would have is there's a strip of North Liberty Street that runs from Westchester to Sunset that might also be included in that. It looks like it's included on the map. And that's an area that has, it's on the west and east side of North Liberty. And it looks as if that area would be then the populous area where everybody would try to congregate. But to include Westchester in this, I think, certainly think makes an awful lot of sense from the purpose of the congestion on Westchester during the course of the summer especially. Just as a side note, if 51% of, of the population is necessary, we can certainly get the neighborhood to go along with that. 50%, at least 50% of the people were here at the public hearing that was held before and spoke for this proposal. Thank you.
Can I just note that that's actually not required? Because these are town administration recommendations in our public hearing. This wasn't put forward because of a petition this time. And we also reviewed those areas on North Liberty and it was, our recommendation is to not include those.
Yeah. No.
I could add about the North Liberty, just this week, the traffic safety committee reviewed some issues there with that little strip there between Sunset and Westchester. And we made some, we're going to make some recommendations the DPW is going to put in place that's going to involve some striping. There's one part there that there's some parking taking place that really it shouldn't be because it's right up against the intersection. We're going to properly designate the parking, no parking areas there. And I think with the striping in the lane markings, that'll take care of that problem. If it doesn't, then we can come back and review it. But as the map stands now, the residents on North Liberty would not qualify for a residential parking permit.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any further public comments? Hearing done. I'll close the public hearing for discussion.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to think, I'm listening to Curtis' concerns. I'm trying to think, will this, you know, make it better or worse? I mean, it's sort of, you know.
It's hard to know.
I know. And that's what I'm trying to, I'm struggling with a little bit.
We're going to vote on all these together? We're going to pass them all?
Unless someone wants to make an amendment to the changes.
I mean, it's a, you know, it's been thought out by people who spend a lot of time reviewing this. I have confidence in their process. I can't, just can't weigh in whether it's going to work or not, but I, I will go along with the recommendation because that's what they do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm fine with the recommendations. I just have some, some questions on the 16.1.4. I think that going to, from 400 to 1,000 in Columbus State of Christmas, that was driven by these comments coming from here. Is that right, Chief?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's coming from us. It'll probably get voted in, but I just, living in that area, as in having two businesses right there, I don't think it's necessary, the timing. The $1,000 is fine. If it's only 12 or 15 permits, they're probably going to pay it. I don't think, if they don't pay it, where do they go? You know, two fairgrounds road. So there's other options. So it's more of a convenience factor for them to pay that. So that makes sense. But the, the Columbus State of Christmas, I, I'm not for that part. But it'll probably get voted out.
That was, that's what came out of our last hearing on this.
Yeah.
I'm not for sure what you're, you're saying Columbus. Okay. So.
The change till after stroll.
I'm buying Columbus State to Memorial.
I think part of the issue there, truthfully, may be that with the current parking situation, with all those $25 commercial vehicles, it has been very problematic up there since Columbus Day. It's very possible that with this $25 permit being cut back to just people who need it, that may not be a problem anymore. But quite frankly, on the weekend, there's no parking in that parking lot for anybody. Because all the commercial vehicles right now are up there. And there's a lot of people that leave the island for the weekend. They park there and even their personal vehicles. So. That's why we did it because there were some complaints from people after this last stroll that the parking was at a premium.
I heard complaints on Halloween, over Thanksgiving and stroll, that that lot was chucked full of people who parked there and left for the weekend.
But this isn't going to alleviate that.
And it always will be a tree.
There was no overnight parking.
Well, it'll alleviate the commercial vehicles.
The non.
But the, but the passenger vehicles were normal residents that have non-commercial vehicles. As long as they're allowed to park there overnight, there'll be, there'll still be a lot of cars there. But it'll take all those commercial vehicles and trucks and panel trucks out of there.
So it's still, you can park there overnight after Columbus Day?
This is for commercial.
This is commercial.
This is for commercial vehicles. Yeah.
Well, maybe I need another explanation because to me, I thought the distinction was between whether it's non-resident commercially registered or resident commercially registered.
Correct.
Okay. So the 14, I'm sure you know who they are. If they know somebody who they could, I mean, won't they just automatically move to get theirs, to have theirs become registered as a resident?
And rather than pay the $1,000?
Yeah.
I, if they do, they're not going to. I, if they do, they're not going to, they're not going to be able to park there because they're going to have to come in, in order to get the $25 permit.
Yeah.
They're going to have to come into us, and they're going to have to prove to us that they have business down there at night. In other words, they're cleaning business and they're cleaning bars after they close, or they're, um, a plumber who has to go down and deal with the plumbing thing, and we may give him a temporary just to deal with that one plumbing thing during that.
So all the resident, well, the, uh, the resident commercial registered vehicles, um, have come to you and demonstrated that they have?
Right now, they haven't, because right now, all they got to do is come in and, and prove they're a resident, and they've got a commercial vehicle, and they get a permit. That's why we have so many of them all the same.
But are you going to, is that going to change?
Yes. Now they'll only get one if they have business down there. A fisherman who goes out fishing at 3 o'clock in the morning.
So that's, that's part of the permit language change, not the permit fee change, correct?
Yeah.
Because that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Are we just changing the fee or are we changing the language?
Changing the language.
Okay, okay. Is that the satisfactory proof of the 16.1.2?
That's what we had way at the beginning when we first implemented this program, and it worked. And, and it was, when we changed it to allow any Nantucket resident with a commercial vehicle to get a permit, that's when it came in.
Okay, right, okay.
And what do you estimate, how many do you estimate, what was the, how many do you estimate parked downtown over the course of the weekend at any one time?
Well, I believe we have 15 to 20 of those, uh, non-resident things, and I believe we had 175, 175 commercial vehicle permits out there, and practically all those probably were down there downtown on the weekends and overnight.
And there's a fair amount that figure out where the, uh, where your, where there's no, like, they go just outside the zones. So that'll still occur, you know, and some of this, I, I, we add 200 homes a year, 2.3 cars per home. Doesn't mean they're parked in the parking lot, they're at the driveway, but they're here somewhere, and this is, we're under more pressure. This, it's increases a little bit every year. So things that were okay 10 years ago, 5 years ago, are not okay now, so.
And when does this effective?
This, this will take effect, uh, immediately. We have not sold any 2018 permits yet in anticipation of this change.
It has to go in effect as of the advertisement date.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
So I move approval on the package?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that concludes our public hearing for this evening.
Did we do the speed limit too?
Yes, it's for everything. And, um, I can get an add-in, I can send an add-in tomorrow so we can have it, the effective date being next Thursday, the 28th, or Friday, the 29th.
That's perfect.
Okay, selectments, reports, and comments. Continued review of FY '19 general fund budget. I think there's a couple of changes in the recommendations.
Yes. So following last week's meeting, we had some internal discussion about the input that the board provided, and we have some revisions to some of the slides that we wanted to go over with you and just run by you some, some possible revisions. We have.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you want to take us through?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Was this in our packet?
Um, the slides were not in your packet.
Okay, because my, my packet says, that was in this, and this says for December 13.
Correct, the slides, you have not. We were not able to put it together by last Friday.
Okay.
And, um.
So we'll need to walk it, walk us through it.
Yeah, we're going to walk you through it.
There, there's not a lot.
Surprise.
There's not a lot, so it'll be, um.
I don't think you're going to be overly surprised, but don't.
So the first slide, um, we, we changed was, uh, recommendations to use of free cash. Uh, the, the certified amount hasn't changed, but when we went through the presentation last Wednesday, we had recommended 192,000.
So what page are you on? On the, on the presentation from the 13th?
Oh, um.
Page 12?
Page 12, maybe? 13, maybe?
It's page 12.
Hold on.
It's page 113 of our packet.
Okay, 113, okay.
Okay, so, um, we originally proposed 192,900 of one-time expense increase requests. As you can see below, we have actually, um, reduced the Affordable Housing Trust Fund from the 800,000 initially recommended based on some of the discussion we had heard, um, down to 600,000, which is slightly above last year, but does reach that $1 million with CPC funding as well. We've increased, proposed increasing.
Excuse me, I didn't, I don't send, it's not on my page, 112.
Page 112. It doesn't show the changes, though.
No, I don't, I don't, okay.
Page 112 of the complete packet.
Okay, all right, I'll keep looking.
So we've proposed increasing, uh, one-time use of free cash by approximately 300,000, and we'll take you through that, um, in the additional slides. No other changes, uh, to capital projects or to the school requests or recommendations. I think the Island Home was the slide that garnered the most discussion. Um, we listened to and took out of, uh, those conversations, uh, that if we were going to propose this, that using it for ongoing expenses in future years was not, um, necessarily the, what would be supported, so we have recommended, we're still recommending reducing it by the 50%, but what we're recommending is that it be used for one-time expenses. Um, we've labeled some here potentially for DPW transportation or facilities capital to work, as we work through what the capital exclusion that we're going to recommend in conjunction with the Capcom's processes. What this would do is it would still leave it available in the levy capacity to be used, um, for our Island Home subsidy in, in the subsequent years if, if we need, if that was the, the direction, so.
But to, to the projected retained earnings of 2.1?
This still only deals.
That doesn't really reflect what we'll end up at the end of the day because it doesn't have capital in there?
That doesn't have the 625, no, this still is, that, this shows only what we had made in that recommendation. So if we made this, followed through with this portion of the recommendation and the 625 was approved at town meeting, which is what's before Capcom now, uh, we'd have 1.5 million dollars of retained earnings still, um, available for appropriation as necessary and to, if unallocated, would be recertified on July 1st of 2018. Uh, I think we just included the update, or the historical information a little bit closer in the package just so that people could see it, um, relative to their retained earnings, CPE, our stabilization and trust funds, and our certified free cash. This kind of documents the changes. Um, there's 1.5 million dollars in recommended expenditures, 500,000 in one-time funded through, um, various sources and free cash, and ongoing of 973, which is a $12,000 reduction from the prior, uh, presentation last week. The highlighted areas, so what we've done essentially is with that reduction, we've moved some of the DPW, um, ER expense increase requests that we had proposed being, um, ongoing to one-time to see how they function, um, next year with them, and we've proposed some of the additional, um, funding available be used, um, from that levy capacity to be used for the highlighted positions, um, being in the additional mechanic, moving the dispatch part-time to full-time, and, um, there was a $100,000 increase in the use of free cash from last year, uh, in this year's, to reduce that to 384 available, and that's a recommendation which was part of the original discussion last week of what we would do with the 750 to hire a real estate specialist. We, we think that ideally what we might do in the first year of having this is try to contract out to accomplish some of that and see how that goes, and we've allocated 100,000 because we're not entirely sure what that would look like at this time. This slide seven will take you through the changes. As you can see, we've reduced tax levy and other revenues by 12, to 829,000. Free cash usage has gone up to 492 as proposed on the previous, the first, the second slide, excuse me. The 81,000 from the other reserve in revolvers remains the same, so total of all funding sources would change to 1,544,000. And that I think is the, it is the last slide, sorry.
So just to bring the board's attention to, um, some of the discussion from last week, which I'm sure you already remember, one of the bigger items had to do with the Affordable Housing Trust and discussion about reducing the, um, recommended number from 800 to something lower, like possibly 600. So we did that and worked it in as Brian just went over that, and we do have an email from them about that, just make sure, make sure everybody knows it. Um, there was a bit of discussion at FinCom earlier in the week regarding that number, and it, I don't really want to speak for them, but it sounded like there was some member support for the, um, number the board talked about last week.
Yeah, I'll concur with that. There was a little, a brief discussion, but since nothing's before them, it was very brief, but there was general support for the 600,000.
And the 600,000 is a $100,000 increase over last year.
That's a $100,000 increase over last year, yes.
We started with a million two years ago.
That's correct, and then last year was 500,000, and then this year would be, um, the recommended 600,000, yes.
And so, um, you know, the reason I recommended the reduction is because we had a pattern of doing about a million with that first time, and I think it'd be helpful to give guidance to, uh, town administration in the future, um, that we pick a number that the community, we, we think the community should invest in, uh, to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, whether it's the, and I look at community as a combination of the tax dollars, whether it comes from the general fund or from CPC, um, because right now, you know, Libby's saying, "Well, this is kind of what I heard," and, you know, and I, I think personally if we, if we said whatever the number is, you know, a million or more or less, um, and I recommend we do that so we get some clarity around our commitment.
I'll take a, I'll take a stab at it. I think, you know, I'm, I'm in agreement, if we drop the number, that's fine. I think that part of our job is making sure that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund comes to us with a, you know, with their priorities and how they spend it. You know, we have the, we and the FinCom have to be sort of the gatekeepers of the money, and if we think, you know, that how the money is being expended, and I'm not saying it hasn't been expended well this go-round, but in previous years, we had issues with it, I think if it isn't being expended well, then we do have to be careful, and that was, you know, sort of Bobby and Rick's concerns a couple of years ago when we put the money through, which we did, and so I just think it's not as simple as saying everyone gets a million dollars a year because sometimes, you know, if they're not spending it well and it's, and it's, the priorities aren't clear, and it changes year to year and board to board, then I think we have to be, you know, understand well enough what's going on and step in and protect, you know, our, that's a lot of money, and, you know, we want to make sure we're seeing new homes being done from it. We want to make sure they're looking at doing things that don't always cost money, and it's not just a giveaway program. There are other incentives that they could be doing. I want to make sure that looking at all of those things, and I think, you know, so that's sort of, you know, and, and I don't think we've, we haven't deterred them. I think what you guys are suggesting is a good idea, but sometime during this year, I think we should have a present, a presentation from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund giving us their priorities and their list and everything they've looked at, and I don't think it should just be, be looked at as a scholarship committee or something, you know?
Okay, sure. And Matt, with that process, then we'll be able to decide what that, what that number is, whether it's 500 or a million?
Yeah, well, then we may feel comfortable to give more money. If they come up and say, "Hey, these are all the things we're doing," you know, and one of my pet peeves is, is, is sort of continually saying a no-interest loan that never, that doesn't have to be paid back is not, they're, well, it's a loan. That's not a loan, that's a grant. You know, you can call it whatever you want, but by the time someone has a house for 20, and I don't, not saying that people don't need it at an 80% income, but at 120 or 150, maybe it should have had some interest to it so there was more money coming back to the trust. And so if, if we don't, if we don't bring up those, you know, if the finance department or this board or the finance committee doesn't note that and bring up those issues, those will never be addressed. You know, I think we have to stop looking at it as, you know, everyone, for, to get housing, everyone has to be given money, money, money. I mean, I think there's changes we've made that can encourage it, and I'd like to see that board coming up with, so, you know, we shouldn't be suggesting tiering fees, they should be suggesting it. You know, we shouldn't be suggesting zoning changes, they should be suggesting it, you know, so those are the kind of things that I'd like to see them focusing on, but.
So we had an opportunity, and they came to present to us, they gave us, they gave us what they'd spend their money on, they talked about the fact that it's, uh, it's a loan and with no interest, and we had the opportunity to give them feedback and, and we, and I don't recall that we took any action.
We didn't take action, I'm just, I'm making the same comments I made that night, and I've made them personally again.
Okay, but I mean, you know, so, I mean, we, we hadn't given them any guidance, so in the absence of that, I, I, you know, I, I see the issues really separate. Uh, to me, it's how much money is, are, is, are we asking our community through their tax dollars to spend, to invest for affordable housing? And, you know, we have a system where they come to us and make reports, and we, that's our opportunity to redirect them if, if we think so, and we didn't last time, so.
Oh, I think we did, I mean, I, I like to think, I think, I think they said they, they understood what I was saying loud and clear, but maybe that, maybe it needed to be a vote, maybe it doesn't have, maybe they, maybe they think that, that what I was saying wasn't credible, and they don't have to follow it, I don't know.
No, no, I think they took the, as guidance, but, you know.
I think we definitely gave some guidance that a top priority is to create more affordable housing stock. But on the, on, they're still trying to build a base to be able to do something significant. And, um, hopefully we'll have a more permanent funding source soon because one of the things that we also discussed was that we really need to, in, in some way, set aside money for the year-round bus service, even though we don't have to pay it immediately, it's going to start this coming year, and, um, and some other things that have, have been high priorities. And we need to, um, complete the infrastructure for the affordable housing project or the community housing project that we've sponsored next door.
I'm not touching that.
We continue our conversation about the budget. So another question I raised last time was the, um, and may not get the terms correct, but was the new first-time, um, use of a capital override?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, any more thoughts on that? Or I didn't see that as reflected in your comments, so I just was asking again about that.
I think Capital Program Committee is going through their process, and they've made recommendations or are working through some of those on, um, what is, what they're going to recommend ultimately out of their report. I think that it has to be, in my, my recommendation is that we consider it because I, I think we're all aware that we have a, um, a, we have needs that need to be met, and if we continuously push them out every year and don't look at options like this, then the costs only do continue to increase for these things that we're doing, and so I think that as they move through, and we've highlighted in, with, um, back to, uh, with our Island Home here, if we take 700, if this plan were to move forward, it potentially could reduce the need for that capital exclusion down substantially by $755,000, uh, which would make it maybe more palatable to everybody as we work through it, but, um, I do think that it's something we need to consider and have the discussion as we move forward on doing, otherwise we continue to delay some of these things that we can get taken care of and move forward on. So I still, I, I'm still recommending it to town administration.
And I guess my thought from a board perspective, that's a different, that's a, a more, I think more of a policy decision, if we're going to start using capital overrides, um, I'm not saying it's a good or bad thing, but I think it's, you know, if, if that's a tool we want to give town administration to use, I think we should talk about it and, and make them aware of it. Uh, I mean, you know, make a decision about it, so, uh, I think it's worth some conversation.
Just so you know, Jim, we haven't really dug into it at Capcom, we just got all the recommendations, what we're not recommending, recommending, so the funding sources, we've kind of touched on it, but not.
But does Capcom make recommendation on funding sources?
Well, we make recommendations on how we would fund that, and then they may, if, as they move forward with their process, um, if they say yes or no to various items that they're not going to recommend, we would, we're, we're still working through some of the changes to, to see what it would do.
But they don't recommend funding sources?
They don't, they would, no, the funding sources are still.
So they come up with a list, and then we decide, or you decide, or you recommend how you're going to pay for it? And I think that's, I think that's fine, let's do that, and then leave that as a, you know, the, the conversation about that for another time. you know, the conversation about that for another time.
Okay.
And not necessarily have a list of things that we'd spend that on. I think, because that, to me, that takes away some of the authority of the Capcom to, you know, to, you know, they may prioritize differently, so.
Okay.
Just a recommendation.
Any other comments, questions?
Well, other comment, I think, you know, as we go forward, I think with, on the sum of the capital, I think the larger items should be split out for vote, in case people feel strong. I don't know which ones those are, we discussed that a little bit earlier today, agenda meeting. You know, I think some of the capital issues we're having is because wages and benefits and things have crowded those, those out of the budget. And if we aren't willing to find a way to tackle some of that, and, you know, then we're never going to get control of that. So, I mean, I just, I've, I, I can beat that drum, good luck. I think we should try to get some of these projects shovel-ready and not necessarily fund them all at once. I think we should get them shovel-ready, be, have everything ready to go to be able to bid them, so that they, so when we're bidding, the people know the bid is real, and we know it actually what it will cost, and we don't get in a situation where we're doing two or three, you know, doing two or three town meetings to fund something, I just think. And, you know, indications are, we may be going into a downturn, in which case, we may get some better bids than we thought. We got a better bid on, on the plus sewer stuff than we thought we were going to get than our estimates. And so maybe that would follow through on a couple of other things. So instead of like bidding at the peak, we should get a bunch of things shovel-ready and bid when, when the time is right.
Matt, can I ask you a question on that? So for, for example, on Old South Corridor, like that's, let's say it's 15 million for all the smaller projects, are you saying that we should get it, get it appropriated? We're not going to borrow the money until we actually do it through year, so now, is that how you get it shovel-ready?
Well, I think we should design it and know what the design is. I think as soon as we, as soon as we tip off what we've put us, put, put as the amount, then, then that's what the bid's going to be. As soon as we say we have 15 million, the bid's going to be 15 million.
Except the Shimo Sewer Project, that's the only exception to that.
That was an exception, and maybe it'll change as, as economy change, but I think somehow we need to get the design all done and then be able to bid it. And then, and then, and then ask for the money we need for the bid. And I think we should be careful, if we, we'll use the DPW building, for example, let's say, he came in at a huge number last week, let's say that we think we can spend eight or 10 million for it. We should put it out to bid and reject things at 12, and bid it again. You know, I just think, you know, I just, and still, and get a good, and still know, and not build, build things badly, don't build them with poor materials that aren't going to last. Know that you're building a good building, but don't, you know, you don't have to spend it, you don't have to do it that year, you can wait another year if you have to.
I think we can definitely do that with, like, a facility building like that. I'm not sure about the Old South road improvements, I think we've got to get some direction from the community that we want to do the full scope. And I, I kind of envisioned that we'd be doing it in pieces over a number of years. So I think that that's going to be hard to bid the whole thing with one contractor. I, that, that was my vision of it, that it would be, okay, we're doing this rotary, and we're going to get a bid on that part and move forward with it.
But now, let's use that as an example, what happens, we put, let's say we put 15 million up, and we think the rotaries are going to be 2 million each, and the first two rotaries are $5 million each, and we're out of money.
Then we may not want to move forward with it.
If we think the price, we, we can reject bids, the way that it's written, so we wouldn't be obligated to do that in that scenario.
Yeah, but, but do we really have the political will and the foresight to say no? Like, when, when we, when we put something to bid and everyone wants it, are we going to have the foresight to say, "Hey, you know, we can't afford 15 million for three rotaries, guys, we've got to rebid it?"
Well, I think that-
They'll have, they're going to be, they're going to have our heads, because, you know, so that, I just think that's-
I mean, if the engineers were telling us that those were substantially higher than they thought, that it was valid for construction, I think our recommendation would be not to accept and to rebid. I don't, and so, yes, if that was the case, then I think we would have that fortitude to come to, to do that, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think we would need to keep sight of the projections for every other piece of the project, to make sure we weren't overspending on one item.
Which then means you need to have the whole project and all the projections in front of us when we're getting ready to do anything with any of it. Okay, and if we're doing it that way, I'm, I'm on board.
Yes.
If we're doing it piece-
No, no, should we all together, and we may change, that may result in a recommendation to change the priority implementation, I don't, I don't know, but.
Right, okay.
I just want to add one thing, I want to thank you for, and appreciate the revisions you made, I think it's, you clearly heard from members of the board, and I support the revised budget.
Thank you very much.
One more comment about our Island Home is if, you know, if we're considering doing it somewhat differently next year, I would like to, I would hope that we have our operating, our relocation plan, and everything agreed upon by the union before, the agreements we need, before we put the, you know, put the number out again. I mean, I think we get our homework done, sort of like having things shovel-ready. We get our homework done, so we know that we can do it, and we know what we're doing. I, I think that we sort of, I, I don't think we should be doing it, doing one thing without getting the other things done.
Understood.
That's just-
Okay.
Thank you.
So the next steps are, no. At some point, we'll need some kind of indication of endorsement by the board, you don't necessarily have to do that tonight.
Well, we might as well. I recommend, I'd make a motion that we endorse the budget as presented and revised.
I'll second it.
Discussion? So is that, are we, are we suggesting option one in this?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear on that.
But that it's to be spent on one-time expenses?
Right, okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Sure.
Jim, it's like you've been giving Christmas presents all night. Libby's going to be so happy.
You know, it's not, I mean, it's, I really believe they've done a very good job of developing a budget reflecting the need to live within means and to do what we need to continue to invest in the community. So, and I, and I, and I know by my comments, I may seem a little harsh, but I think they, you know, came, and they came up with great revisions.
Okay, so we, next is Harbor Place Work Group. We just had a beginning discussion.
So this is a very, you know, more of a beat future concept and discussion. We had a very comprehensive meeting yesterday, and, you know, Janet made me want to make some comments later, and Dave Fredericks is here representing the owners, but, so we had several, we had three main discussion items. The first was that we received from Desmond very preliminary conceptual plans of the intermodal facility with a focus on developing a base project for a parking garage. Talked about location, learned a lot about how to, what, you know, what a garage efficiency factors are, how that affects, how that affects the number of cars you can park. Gave him some, you know, gave them feedback, and they're going to be coming back to the work group in late December, late, I'm sorry, late January, to really show us some, you know, first, you know, really more than conceptual plans that we can kind of wrap our arms around and begin to circulate and have more in-depth discussions about. Secondly, as we, as we've said we've been doing, we began a conversation about the Memorandum of Understanding we would have between the three owners and, and the town. I sent around, it was a document that was given to us yesterday, which were the, basically the elements of MOU. We didn't have a lot of discussion about it, and, but we asked the developer to come back with an ex, soon after the first of the year, with a first draft of a, of an MOU, and then the board will take that up as soon as we receive it. And that's it. A good discussion, we had, we had members of the public there, this is a public meeting, we meet again on January 22nd at 10:30. I'd encourage board members to come. We had active participation from members of the public that gave us some good input, so.
23rd.
23rd.
23rd, sorry. I know, Dave or Janet, you want to add anything to that? Okay. Thank you.
But we would have to post it if, because there's two members already there.
Yeah.
So we would have to post it if one of us-
It is posted.
Oh, is it? So we can come up?
Oh, yeah, it's posted.
Okay.
It's a posted meeting, notes are taken, published, and, yeah, so.
But it's posted as a Board of Slotmans meeting?
So if, so then-
It's posted as a workgroup meeting, but if other board members wanted to attend, then you would just be attending.
As an individual?
Right.
Okay, that's fine.
You wouldn't be deliberating as a board.
And we're not, we're doing a lot of conversations, you could, you can converse, we're not doing a lot of deliberating right now, so that all comes back to this group. Thank you.
Other committee reports?
Just Capcom, I kind of mentioned earlier that we finally got through many more recommendations this year, or asked this year. We got through them all, recommended or not recommended, recommended the majority of them, and it had discussion on five or six, well, and so we needed more information. But that's where we're at, and I think next, I'm going to say the first week of January, go kind of like the last couple steps. And I believe it goes FinCom, then back to here, is that right?
I think that at some point in early January, we will be bringing something back to the board.
Okay.
Yep.
And then all three of us, FinCom, Capcom, are we having a joint meeting this year? Does that happen?
We're trying to figure out when to do that, yes.
Yeah. Are we waiting on, on us, are we waiting on Capcom?
A little.
Well, with a lot more projects, it's got to take a lot more of your time, so.
The new ranking system.
Yeah, it's a big deal, it's very complex.
It's the first year with a new, new process.
Yep.
We had the last CPC meeting of the year yesterday, and did a nice presentation of, of like a plaque for Neville Richmond, as he's retiring, so.
Nice.
And there will be one hun, that, a duplicate is going to be hung in the CPC office. I thought it was nice.
I have two quick comments, not committee reports, you want to go ahead, Jim?
No, no, I was going to make a motion to return.
He beat you.
I didn't want to bring it up when, when Amy was up here, because it's more, more occupancy issue than licensing, but I forgot to bring this up last meeting. Stroll weekend on Saturday night, I was at the Culinary Center, had dinner, left around 10, and I walked, wife and I were walking home, and I decided to, as I usually do, busy weekend, just walk around and see who's busy, if we're busy at all. And it was really strange, it was almost like it was set up, but it wasn't, it was impossible. Three different restaurants I went by, I overheard the doorman saying, "I can't let you in until four more people leave." I can name the restaurants, but it made me, I felt good about that, that, even though maybe everything's not perfect with all the occupancy and enforcement, but we're getting somewhere. And there, in each place, there was room inside. So then I thought, all right, next Monday and Tuesday, I need to go to all those places and say, "Hey, how was your stroll?" And they all said it was one of the busiest ever.
Wow.
So that, that was a really good sign.
Yeah.
So again, it's not, it's not perfect, maybe, the occupancy world, but things are progressing. And then the second thing I had was, I was on the town website today, my old, my old stomping grounds. I wanted to give a shout out to Florencia and everybody else who, there's a lot of really good information on there, and it's much more well-together than, than I ever did. When you do the, the dropdown menu, there's a nice project section from 6FG, the DPW facility, really easy access, and everything's there, and it looks good. So I just wanted to, to say thank you for that, everybody who works on that. I'm done.
Okay. Well, everyone have a great holiday. We will be adjourning for a couple of weeks.
See you next year.
All those in favor?
Aye.